Good morning, Commissioner's meeting agenda Wednesday, February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. All three commissioners are present. Starting off with public comment, though I know we have a lot of public unless they have something outside of radically rural. I don't see any other public, so I'm going to move on with the next item. Elected officials and department heads, Doug, do you have anything for us aside from the item that we're going to be talking about later on?
Do you mean aside from the non-public?
Yeah.
Only if you and Cheryl decided that you would like to talk about the FBI transport contract.
I was actually reading that yesterday and reading through that email, and I actually think it's something that you should actually take the time to have Jack and Bob and Terry hear about because it is an opportunity. But we would have to come up, you know, we have to work, make sure that fifty dollars is a true rate, or if there's something higher, we'd have to do. That would be the only sticking point, but why don't you tell the commissioners your FBI question?
If you say five zero fifty.
Yeah.
Okay. So we were approached by the FBI, meaning Major McGlaughlin was approached by them a couple of weeks ago. Asking about setting up an agreement to do transports for them. It would only be a relatively small number of inmates that are already being held here. Vermont inmates. And the purpose would be to get them to court hearings, most often in Burlington, Vermont. When they are bringing them there to do proffers. The rate would be a separate contract, even though it's the federal government, the FBI would be paying not the marshals. It's estimated that it wouldn't be that much volume, which is either good or bad. It's nothing that would exceed our capacity, and we would have the right of refusal and saying, no, we don't have the staffing. But it's only about once a month. And the amount of revenue, depending on what we charge, is not, you know, that significant. We would be proposing a rate of fifty dollars an hour anyway, so that we're not losing money doing it, which is the case with our current contracted rate with the marshals. But it means setting up a contract, it means a certain amount of work, and it's not a, it's not a big deal for us either way. So open to hearing your thoughts about moving towards doing that or just skipping over it, declining.
Do they have a draft contract?
Do they have a draft contract? Prob- probably, I don't know who they're using now, or if they're doing, I think they're doing the transports internally. So they might not, but would certainly ask about that in the early stages.
Did you say that these are inmates that are currently with us?
Yes. At first, I thought it was like a carve out of separate matter where it may be transports for cases involved with the FBI that weren't currently housed here. That's not the case, it would only be when they happen to be in our custody through the marshal service.
These transports involve more than one officer?
They do. Yeah.
We can do that?
Actually, I'm almost certain they do, the standard for the, yeah, they would, because it's, they're in our custody and, and the current requirement is for two officers. So the, the rate should actually be even higher than that. If you look at what we're paying the officers, and it does include, the contract would include mileage reimbursement at the federal rate, but.
Doug, is that fifty dollars per hour per officer or fifty dollars just for transport period?
Per officer is what we have in mind, yeah. Because otherwise, we're losing money, you know?
Yeah, and is it, do you expect that your officers are going to be in an overtime state, or this is going to be part of their normal forty hours?
We would, if that's the rate, we would only do it when it's possible to avoid overtime, because otherwise would be, I think, losing money between the overtime. Depending on who's doing it, obviously, Major McGlaughlin is a little bit higher hourly rate, a lot of it would be him. But we could decline it if it was going to eat into overtime, and that would be, that's our current thinking, is if, if it was doable on a day that we didn't need overtime. You know, we, we could do it.
These people are with us now, and presumably have to go to the court now. How do they get to court now?
We transport them under a separate, you know, it's the federal government, but I don't know, they don't play in the sandbox and they, or they pinch their pennies separately, so. If the purpose isn't, if the purpose is, you know, an existing case that they're being held on and already charged on, resume, then they're, they're charged, we're charging them under the current contract. This, this is a situation where there's new charges in the works, where the most common examples, the prosecution is needing to show at a court hearing of what's called a proffer, so some proof of sufficient evidence on, on new pending charges. And it's separate enough from the existing matters that they'd be, the FBI is initiating it, and the FBI would be paying it under a separate agreement.
So if, if I just heard what I think you just said, transporting these people anyway. So it doesn't really involve any new impacts at all?
It does if we don't do it, and this is the purpose, we don't transport them, they, they come and get them. Or they find someone else to do it, in fact, that did happen two weeks ago, we didn't have any agreement in place, and they were asking us with like three or four days' notice to do it, and we have no basis to bill it to the marshals, because it's not authorized by the marshals, it's authorized under the FBI.
Well, I, I don't see any reason why you wouldn't explore it, because if it, it might actually provide for some compensation for people we'd be transporting anyway. But I don't know, I don't see a doubt.
We wouldn't be transporting them.
Okay.
We, we, we might, we would transport them at some point in time, because literally almost every federal inmate, we get them here and/or we get them to their next facility destination, and many times we're getting them to court. But this is a specific court visit for a separate purpose arranged by the FBI. And so if we don't have this agreement, they would transport them, or some other vendor that has a contract with them would come and, and pick them up.
So the critical point here is that you can, you can say no if it's going to put a strain on your staffing?
Yes.
And it's only once a month or so, it's not.
That's our, our, our best estimate, yeah.
So it really comes down to, it's a, really, it's a service we all already provide in reference to the marshals. It would be an ad vision of the FBI, if you upon the federal rate that we call, upon something we can do. And then just move forward with the caveat that if we don't have the, the ability to do it, we won't be able to do it, correct?
Yeah.
It's not a mandate and that we have this contract.
I think the more people that we have relationships with, the better offering.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a positive, that's an advantage, it's, it's developing positive relationships with other partners in the system. It's not going to generate a lot of revenue, just because the volume is, it's very low. And I would, I would include, you know, Cheryl in the process of looking at the rates and, and what's fair.
I want to think about carrying it to the FBI, to the Charles office. I mean.
Right, and that's something that Doug and I had talked about at one point, too, is what is your rates and what are?
Yeah, I mean, it's got to be an all-in thing plus about, you know, twenty percent or so, or, or all likely charged for the regional prosecutor, or you charge for the highest rate pay.
That was one of the reasons why I was asking if it was overtime, because, I mean, at first glance, the fifty dollars will likely cover the average cost of an officer. And even Scott with about thirty percent inflation, and then, then I was wondering about the vehicle, but if we're gonna get reimbursed for mileage, I mean, usually the mileage is some level of an inclusive cost for wear and tear on the vehicle. Perhaps on top of whatever we come from, come up with a rate, another added ten percent for just admin costs. And when I go through that steps, fifty dollars might be what the figure is, but that's kind of what I'm thinking is get either an average or the highest, at least Scott's rate, take Scott's rate, inflate it by Medicare, retirement, those mandatory things that are based on salary and.
Did you, did you include the hazard stipend?
Thanks for mentioning that, because I'll make sure to include that on top of it.
Yeah, and keep, keep in mind, if we're paying these people by the hour, there's some, there's some hours or, or dollars that have occurred before you actually load it, this is why the agreement's a part, they're just paying for a loaded mile. Then the extent to which somebody is getting ready on, on the payroll before, and then afterwards coming back. We need to kind of make sure that it's a portal-to-portal compensation, not just a loaded mile. So it, it depends, the rate depends on the terms of the agreement in terms of what, what the circumstances are that they're reimbursing us, you know what I mean?
Yeah. And, and this is a conversation that we'll be having, but we're losing money right now providing transports for the US Marshals. That rate hasn't been adjusted since two thousand and ten, and it's something that I'd want to take a look at, and, you know, we're not gonna jeopardize our contractor relationship, but that's thirty dollars an hour.
Right, yeah.
And it's, it's something, we're gonna have a visit, we haven't met the new chief deputy, or I haven't, in Vermont. Although we, we need to negotiate through New Hampshire, but in this year, it's a goal to take a look at that and start a conversation and reduce that rate.
It could be a mix between the per diem rate, which probably is still a hundred and five dollars a day.
Yeah, it is, that's the same, those rates have been the same since two thousand and ten and and, and Stratford County is at the same rate, Merrimack County is actually getting paid more on both the per diem and the transportation rates.
Well, we should at least equal how it's paid, because that's what it used to be. You have to get more than a hundred.
Yeah, I was thinking we are the highest.
Not anymore, I don't know when Merrimack adjusted their rates, but I was talking to their superintendent a couple of weeks ago, and they're at one ten and thirty-six dollars an hour, which is still not really enough on the the thirty-six, in my opinion.
Well, they do need us, so you should take a shot at it.
Yeah.
Yeah. They need, they're, they need us, they're short on beds, and we've been providing a great service, high quality for a long time, so we have some strength in negotiating, but, but we need them too.
I was gonna say, let's, let's, let's understand the, the negotiation as we do it.
I know, Chris, I, you get very nervous when you hear me talking about this. I'm really, I'm really good at negotiating when I go and buy new cars.
Our, our strength is that we're picking up the, the western side, and I don't want to take them over the eastern side, so.
Yeah.
That is our, that is our strength, yeah, Vermont certainly needs us. The, the dynamics politically are, I don't know exactly, but we're the rate gets set by New Hampshire, but Vermont is where our numbers are and our strength of relationship and the need is much greater for the Vermont side, for us to be, be in the picture.
So Mo, what I take from this is that you're going to continue to have the discussion, you, Cheryl, and I will, will leave, that Cheryl is going to start working on some, some numbers on some levels with you to see what you can come up with, and then we'll get some language from then, see what the contract looks like.
Yes, we'll get a dra- a draft contract, we'll look at the numbers, I'll include you and Cheryl, and we'll, we'll move forward one, one way or another, and see if it's satisfactory.
Alrighty, I appreciate that, thank you. Kim, I'm sorry, you're here for.
That's it for me until none, do you want to text me when you're ready to do the other agenda item?
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Kim, is there anything from you that, aside from what you're here for?
Just a quick report out on staffing for EMS, I know y'all have been looking for that. We just on Monday, the twenty-sixth, put another six people through orientation. So as of today, we have thirty-eight full-time staff, five per diem staff, and that breakdown is thirteen paramedics, six advanced that are full-time, two that are occasional. And then for EMT basics, we have nineteen full-time and three per diem. We do have two interviews this week for two per diem EMTs that are looking to come on with us. I think as of right now, we're, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say the words, but it feels okay right now.
We're, we're inching closer to where we need to be, the biggest issue that's slowing us down currently is the, the turnaround in state and the answer in reference to licensing, that's a.
They've gotten better.
They've gotten better, but it's still, that's the, even though they're in orientation sometimes, especially the medics, because the jocks, the rotation that they have to do with Dr. Sosie takes a little bit of, that's all.
We have one of the medics that we brought on Monday that's in orientation. She's completed all of her New Hampshire protocols, but she's just waiting for her license to be posted, but typically once you complete the protocols, it's two to three days when they, they post your license, so.
Okay.
Great. Can you say approximately what percent of the EMT employees are women versus men?
I would say probably, honestly, overall, through the whole agency, we're about fifty-fifty.
It's pretty good.
It's not, yeah, yeah, I mean, paramedics only only two of our, three of our paramedics are female, but EMT and advanced EMT, it's, it's more fifty to even sixty percent.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. I had the legislative meeting this week, and I was talking to some of the, some of the top email state reps in state, and I'm like, we can only have you guys leadership, then I think the answer would be in such a better way. Why hold me out that, sorry, guys. Alright, so Cheryl, you're, you're good, right? Okay, then I'm gonna move on to schedule item, and then we'll jump to item number one-one-five-seven, twenty-two thousand and twenty-four, radically rural presentation. Julianne Dotson's here today, so you can talk with us, I remember a few weeks ago, I handed out the the pamphlet that they had given me, you all, we talked about it, you asked if they could come before you to present, so you could have a better understanding of over the last few years, we've been one of the primary sponsors for radically rural, and the success they've had after the pandemic, doing some of the things they had to do to adjust to it, so we asked them to come here, just come with friends and food. So that's always a good thing, and I think a PowerPoint, too, so Julianne, whoever you want up here. I, if you want, you guys can.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. And stuff, there are better things I can do, that's just a little card that you can pass on, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I can send you a link.
Yeah.
Captain, wanted to let you guys know that the volunteer dinner is on April twenty-fourth at four-thirty to six-thirty.
What volunteer dinner?
The Maplewood Volunteer Dinner, so if you can attend, that'd be great, at least one of you.
April twenty-fourth?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you, I'll send you the RSP.
April, April, April twenty-fourth, four-thirty to six-thirty, it's the roast beef dinner, it's always good.
I know, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be honest, Dave.
Not the twenty-sixth, that's all I care about. I get Carol King, think someone.
You should probably know that, I'll be out there.
Okay. She's over in Manchester, the Broadway Show is over in Manchester, so.
Oh, you're not saying the Carol?
No, I'd love to, I, I saw her some years ago when she was in here for Senator.
Yeah, kind of like I said, aside from the camera.
He's running for president.
Oh.
He's now, he's now like a secretary of climate change.
Who's judge?
No, not the judge.
Oh.
Harry, thank you. I was thinking, I was stuck on Kenjo. I was thinking of nights, and I couldn't get back to train. Yeah, just like a sign really quickly.
So while he's doing that, um, thank you so much for having me this morning, and thank you for all of our fan club over here and supporters for being here. One very important question, my daughter is wondering if the donuts aren't a share.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, you can get one maybe. Sorry, I sent this beforehand, but didn't realize that I didn't go through. Okay, um, so, got it, okay. Alright, so just so I can kind of get a gauge for how much everyone in the room knows already, because I might be able to skip through some of my presentation. How many of you have attended radically rural before? Okay, wonderful, and did you go in two thousand and twenty-three or two thousand and twenty-two? Both, wonderful, could you grow, alright, um. As you probably know, radically rural is more than just our annual summit, it really is a huge national network that our county has access to. We have year-round programming, we have many different pieces of the radically rural puzzle to kind of come up with this thriving national rural ecosystem. But the summit is definitely what costs the money, so that's why we're here. And then, so this presentation, I might be able to skip through some things since we have some base knowledge here, and you've read through this, but it should be about ten to fifteen minutes, and then open up for questions after that, so. The, what I'm going to be doing is primarily just an overview of two thousand and twenty-three, the impacts and what's next. And as you can see, this handsome gentleman was able to open for us last year and welcome everyone on behalf of the county, thanks to being the lead sponsor. And I don't know if you all know this, but Cheshire County, we actually host, thanks to radically rural, the nation's foremost rural innovation summit. There is no other national rural summit that is as open and grassroots and flexible as radically rural, there are summits that are open to folks, but they're typically tied to a particular political party constituency, one portion of the country, one topic area, something like that, we really are the national summit, the national rural summit. So why should you support us again? Well, it's working for our county and for rural America, and I hope I can make that case this morning. Next. And I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but innovation and collaboration are what has helped Cheshire County thrive throughout time. And that includes through the pandemic, radically rural is really the perfect conduit to continue to fuel that innovation and collaboration, both in the receiving of it from outside of our county and the sharing of what's here. So this is a quote from one of our attendees from this year, "The two thousand and twenty-three radically rural summit was amazing, distinctive, refreshing, and real. It was the first time in a while that I felt truly hopeful and inspired at a conference, symposium, or committee. I was so impressed with how your team lived into its values, you created a temporary version of the world we all want to be a part of and make more widely accessible for others. Radical imagination and social dreaming in action, exchange of ideas and examples, lots of opportunity to relate, I'm so glad I could be a part of it." And I felt like this quote was a great example, not only to highlight how great the summit is, but also because since that time, Nicole and her organization EcoGather have spent countless hours with me, specifically helping me with some of the projects that I'm working on for our region, and giving our entire network free access to online courses for adult education with many topics that are relevant to rural life. She came and spent a whole day with me here, working with me, so this radically rural relationship is reciprocal, right, with all of our attendees and speakers. Next. I also thought this quote was really exciting, because Chris Estes is with the Aspen Institute, and he is based in DC, he was one of our keynote speakers this year. And he probably goes to conferences and speaks at various places, like week, I mean, he is out on the road like almost all of the time. And he said, this, he said this during his keynote, "The level of curation and detail and effort of this conference is really unprecedented." And he means that, and he is spreading the word about that, and so that is the reputation that we have gained nationally. Okay, so summit data, um, I will dive too deeply, because you have this in your packet, but five hundred and forty attendees this year, seventy-eight speakers, forty states, DC and Canada were represented, seventy-one percent of attendees were from New England and three hundred from New Hampshire. Thirty-five percent, one hundred and eighty-seven of attendees were from Cheshire County, so we have a really great representation of folks in Cheshire County who are directly benefiting from this network and this work.
Do you have a sense of how those forty states are represented against the percentages from New England, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Why, why are they?
So I can actually look that up for you quite quickly. So, um, we have, for example, I would say the highest representation outside of New England was we had a lot of folks from Kansas, we had a lot of. We had a lot of folks, um, from some of the other states. It's a high one. Kansas is definitely the biggest one outside of the Northeast. Nebraska. Um, I mean, they were all represented, but pretty, I would say pretty evenly distributed out of, outside of, um, a few states that have more.
Were these, uh, who were these people? Were they mere attendees? Were they presenters? Did they have products? Just trying to get a sense of, you know, for me, it kind of comes down to the so what question. I understand there's an impact, but then there's a consequence of the impact. And if it's to grow the economy, bring more people in, whatever. So what, these forty forty states brought something here for a purpose. Help me understand why, why people from forty states came here. What their role was in that summit?
Sure. Well, seventy eight of them were speakers and some of those speakers were you know, from New England, but, um, but a lot of them are from elsewhere. We also, our community journalism track, I don't know if you know this, has just exploded and impacted popularity. We are known as the place to be for rural journalism and innovation. And so we have funding, or they have funding, the Sentinel, who we partner with, has funding from the Knight Foundation. And that funding is specifically to pay for attendance of rural journalists. And so you know, they pay for the travel, um, the hotel, all of that. And, um, they have a really just a wonderful time. They go to Tom Ewing's house the night before and have dinner there. Um, it's just a really, really wonderful personal experience for them. So it might be journalists. No one is required to go to radically rural. This isn't like, you know, you're a Main Street administrator and you have to go to the Main Street America Conference every year. No one's required to come. People come because they know that when they come, they're going to get concrete models, solutions, ideas and connections that they can take back with them and skills too. So I would say that we have a pretty good like, it might be nonprofit leaders that are here. It might be, um, uh, folks like yourself, um, who work with municipalities. Um, we have a lot of like local politicians. Uh, we have volunteers from communities who are just enjoying helping their community. So it's quite a diverse group of people that we have here. We have artists, we have, um, you know, farmers, we have a lot of different folks, but most of the folks that come are people who are creating the infrastructure for their communities to thrive. So they're the ones bringing in funding. They're the ones that are developing programs. It's less often unless they're speakers or they have a particular session that's really appealing to them. The, you know, the artists or farmers, I guess, if that makes sense. Um, all right, next. Um, so we've given, over the last six years, we've given a platform to over four hundred speakers. Many of whom are from right here in Cheshire County, many of whom, uh, bring incredible opportunities to us from elsewhere. So for example, this year we hope to have Robert Putnam here. He's, he's from Jaffrey. Um, and he's an author and Harvard professor. We're going to be screening his documentary, Join or Die, and are hoping to have him and his, the author of his most recent book, who actually lives in Keene, believe it or not, um, to to speak with us this year. Not confirmed, but pretty likely. And another example, we're working with the, uh, Cheshire Medical on our health track this year and the Healthy Menadoc Group. And they are hoping to, uh, use some of their funding actually to bring Mark Brackett here. He's the founding director of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. And he is all over the place. He's an exceptionally popular speaker, really, really impactful with the work that he's doing. And they are wanting to use the radically rural platform to bring him here. So that's a huge benefit to our county to bring someone like that in here. Um, you know, the new residency program with Cheshire Medical, I've spoken with Carl many times about eventually when he's ready, using the radically rural platform to share about the residency program and how he did that in a rural region. Um, and we have amazing relationships with all of our prior speakers really. So just this week, William was telling me that one of our speakers from Kentucky, Mike Lewis, with, um, National Center for Appropriate Technology was just in the Hannah Grimes studio room all day with our NCAT representative, working on projects together and they were connected through radically rural. And so and I just, uh, throw some pictures in here for fun. All right, keep going. So this year we had twenty track sessions, two keynotes, a solution slam, a finale, and many, many activities and engagement opportunities. Uh, the highest rated session was actually a bus tour that Southwest Region Planning Commission uh, organized to take folks to Tanglewood and show them our resident owned community and talk about resident owned communities. And that's been hugely impactful. Um, both for our county and, um, for the folks who were able to learn. All right, we'll go, keep going. What was new in two thousand twenty three? We national, we now have a national advisory group of very engaged folks from radically rural who are able to help us to cultivate our programming. Um, we wrote our first white paper, which is being distributed just probably two weeks. Um, and that establishing that avenue and that way to communicate the needs of rural communities policy wise, and then establishing that relationship with senators who know that if they need to, ideas of what rural communities need, they can come to us. Establishing that relationship is going to be in the future as we continue to build that really valuable to us. We started visits to other small towns to learn from them and make connections for radically rural. We have a great networking group that is now able to kind of crowdsource ideas from each other regularly. We had really high, unusually high engagement from our school system this year and various, uh, student entities. And we now have a resource database on our website that we are continuing to expand, um, for uh, models and resources for rural communities. All right, keep going. So non-summit related updates, we wrapped up three years of N B R C funding and through that we had two deliverables, which are really, really good for our county. One is a set of economic indicators that has been populated with twenty years of data and is going to be, uh, maintained on the C D F A website. And that is going to help us over time continue to gauge how we're doing economically. And we also, uh, produced an economic development model with Hannah Grimes as a case study, and that includes the marketplace, Hannah Grimes, radically rural. And that is being shared widely nationally. Um, and we hosted five virtual roundtables with two hundred and seventy four virtual attendees and lots of new national network connections. Um, people seek us out multiple times a week. Hey, I have this resource for rural communities. Can you share it? Hey, do you know of a speaker in your network that would work for this? Hey, can we send someone to radically rural this year? I mean, just multiple times every week you're, um, meeting. And next. So I like this picture because, you know, there's a lot of people we don't recognize. And then there's Eliza right there in the middle who, uh, runs Brew Bakers and she, it's just a good example of how in the sea of people, we have people right here in our community that are really benefiting from what we're doing. Next. Um, another benefit is tourism. We love to showcase our vibrant county vendors, venues, artists, businesses, restaurants, nonprofits, models, resources. And right here you can see some folks perusing in the lobby of the Colonial, all these local products. And when we display those local products, we display their stories with them. And so folks are able to really learn about what we're offering and what we have to share with the world. And I also love this picture because that woman is, um, from an organization called Benevolence Farm in North Carolina. And I would say the first couple of weeks that I worked with Hannah Grimes, three years ago, I saw a Daily Yonder article about what they were doing. And I was like, we have to get them here one day. And it took three years and we finally got them here and it was wonderful. All right, next. Um, this is a quote, uh, you're probably familiar with Julie Shazell. The Greater Menadoc Collaborative believes radically rural is a significant event that introduces the Menadoc region to a highly relevant audience throughout the county. Radically rural is a key marketing opportunity for the promoting the region initiative that differentiates Keene from the many other towns and cities throughout New England, working to attract tourism in new residents. Next. So here's some of the folks that we highlighted. Nonprofits like Menadoc Music, who played at our opening. And every time we highlight folks, we make sure to do that with great care and sharing their story. Venues like delegation hall right here, Hannah Grimes Historical Society, the showroom and so forth. Vendors like C C and D's. And the work that we do with them is also highly, highly curated. And you know, you can see that every time they display food, you've got Shire's right there, which is a huge, um, uh, amazing business in our area. Lakes, um, then, uh, place from Salisbury. So we're really being very specific to use local products. Businesses like Ted's, um, Ted's hosted a run for attendees this year. Local artists and musicians like the Calliope Brothers. Restaurants like Local Burger. Or how about three businesses, a nonprofit, a venue, many vendors, artists and musicians, a restaurant, models and resources all in one, which is Brew Bakers and Terranova and um, Nova Arts and Waka Doodles and all of the amazing collaborative that is in that building. And that's where we host our after party. And we had like seventy five people there this year who stayed long enough to go to that and they were just blown away. We actually had an attendee that produced a podcast afterward about this collaborative. Um, he was from Virginia and he, uh, had Jess Geltzer with Arts Alive. He had Eliza on there. He had Eric Gagnon there. He had all the folks that are kind of a part of this collaborative on the podcast. Next. You can see some of our sessions were standing room only this year, which means, because we worked really, really hard during the pandemic, as Chris had mentioned, the pivots that we had to do. This was our first year fully back in person. And it was scary because people are used to having the virtual option, but we believe firmly that although we want our content to be accessible, we also understand that in-person connection is vital, which I think is why you invited me here, because that's really important. Um, so I don't even know that we'll be able to use Hannah Grimes again this year for our larger sessions because it's just grown so much. Next, this is a session we had in the Historical Society about, um, how using theater to solve issues and problems in communities. This is a session that took place at the showroom. There's no time to even unpack this, but it was such a powerful, powerful session. A professor from Louisiana, um, photographed a hundred old newsrooms in Kansas and wrote about them. And right before this happened, this big thing like exploded with one of those newsrooms and brought a lot of attention to this, but he had a really great presentation. Next. Events like radically rural, as you know, will be essential during the mainstream work. Right here you can see folks that are going on a, a tour with Historical Society and folks doing some yoga at Everglow Wellness. All right, next. Um, press coverage. I'm not going to go through all these, but this is not even an exhaustive list by far. Over the last few years, this is coverage that we've received. You might recognize Forbes, E M P Publishers, the Daily Yonder, um, Watts, uh, Coffin Foundation, Aspen. So there's a lot of coverage that we get, um, for radically rural. Next. So this was an award that the Sentinel received for innovation at New England Newspaper Awards. And although that is certainly not only because of radically rural, radically rural was mentioned as a, a reason for this award that they received. And that's good for us to have recognition for our local news organization. Next, um, they also received an award in two thousand twenty from the Local Media Digital Innovation Awards, um, because of radically rural and what they, what we did to pivot to all virtual that year. Next. Um, how many of you recognize this article? So this was done in two thousand twenty one and it highlighted how Luca and Ted's and other businesses in Keene banded together during the pandemic to turn things around. How many of you knew that that was a connection from radically rural? Maybe not anyone. I was actually contacted by Matt, the guy who wrote this article, to talk about radically rural. And as I was bragging on our town for the innovation and collaboration that is so key to what we do and how we do it. He said, I want to know more about this. And that, and I connected him with Luca and Ted's. And so things like that happen all the time. We're just too busy to stop and write it all down and record it. We try, but there's just so much going on all the time. Speaking opportunities this coming year. Lots of local groups reach out all the time for me to come speak. Um, Rotary Club, Romeo. How many of you guys are familiar with Romeo? Um, and then I'm actually going to be speaking at the United States Association for Small Business and Entrepreneurship Symposium that's happening. Um, I've also been invited, uh, we haven't confirmed details. This is not a hundred percent, but to Stanford University. Um, and Rural Rise, I was on the schedule to be a speaker last year and then they had to postpone. And so supposedly it's happening this year. Uh, but that's, that's another rural summit, but it's really honed in on like entrepreneurship broadband. It's like certain key things that they're honed in on. All right, next. Um, so these are just some summit attendees and some random people off the street who just came to one of the creative displays that we had and just hung out together and listened to music and spent time connecting. Next. So this was our seventeenth year of hosting our connect event, which now takes place during radically rural. And this is an event that really establishes us as the convenient place. And we were able to do it at, you know, you can see Albert with Elm City Compost, who's such a key part of our community there. Um, every single piece of this puzzle is meaningful. The two gentlemen in the bottom left, um, they are from Hatch Space in Brattleboro and touch a train. And they're in that picture figuring out, how can we work together on what we're doing to bring trades back and that sort of thing. So it may just look like people, but every single interaction is valuable. Um, we're owning our role as the community gathering place. In, you'll see that, um, poster right there. M C squared school asked to get involved this year and one of their students designed posters about communication and how communication has evolved over time and how important it is. Because as you know, you know, I'm not just saying this because of the comment you made earlier, but I think all of us see kids walking down the street with their heads in their phones and, and you're like, this isn't working, right? It's not working for us to just be not seeing each other's faces and, and interacting with each other in a meaningful way. So what has evolved? How can we change communication moving forward? And M C squared reached out to me and asked if I could be on the panel for that student's case for graduation this week. So these are things that are happening all the time, these little connections. All right, we are highlighting stellar partnerships and collaborations. You can see this is Terry, uh, from the Keen Sentinel, who has just retired, getting, uh, recognized for his role in being a co-founder of radically rural. We're showcasing our innovation. Here you can see a, a local farm, Broken Boat Farm, who received the ten thousand dollar Pitchfork Prize this year for um, the competition. And you can see Gail Summers from Yasso, who is starting the Keen Multicultural Center pitching during our solution slam. We are making our mark by replicating programs nationwide. We have now had two people replicate different iterations of radically rural. This year there's one in Louisiana for mid-sized cities. We met, I met with them, gave them everything they needed to know how to run a summit and they're running with it for mid-sized cities. And it's wonderful because you know, all flourishing is mutual. When we can help other people succeed, then it's reciprocal too. Um, our Hannah Grimes programs, like our business lab, Pitchfork, uh, our incubator, we have guides that we've made. And lots of communities are reaching out to us to consult with them and writing us into grants to help them replicate these programs elsewhere. Here's just a snippet, just a teeny little snippet of direct impacts to our counties. Well, as you probably know, the county funnels our low to moderate income uh, support for our entrepreneurs through the C D F A micro, the C D B G micro funding. This is, provides incredible opportunities for those L M I clients. Some of them are the ones pitching for that ten thousand dollars and having a national audience. Some of those are gaining. Some of those are gaining skills and experience and connections for their businesses. It really is such a beautiful way to continue to support those clients. Also, the work we're doing with Radically Rural Biotech and Life Sciences. I was just at a meeting at BEA a couple of weeks ago with all of the life sciences players in the region. And the reason that we were there is because of the work that Hannah Grimes and through the Radically Rural platform has done to bring biotech to our region. Feel like I'm constantly in touch with Linda Treadwell and Jay Khan recently about that. And the Jeff Speck Walkability presentation that was done maybe a year and a half ago that was so popular, that was a connection through Radically Rural. We've had two social practice artists in residency, thanks to a session that was done in two thousand twenty one. And there's been major work knitting together, no pun intended, our fiber shed, which is all the pieces of sustainable textiles in our region that are coming together because of a session that took place in two thousand twenty. You attracted me to Hannah Grimes through Radically Rural. I'd say that's a win for the county. And how, you know, all of what we gained for housing, transportation, et cetera. And Chris was on a call yesterday with the Manad Nak Resource Alliance and the Entrepreneurial Housing Solutions Committee that I'm chairing from that. And we had someone speak up and say, you know, the infrastructure that Hannah Grimes has created through Radically Rural has been so, I forget how I said it, but basically said that it's been just really impactful to issues like housing for our region. And I wanted to, you should tomorrow morning and say that. So what's next? A lot of ecosystem development work. So we have had nearly twenty seven years through Hannah Grimes of constant evolution with what we've done. And this is the next step. And if you want to ask more questions about that, I'm happy to talk about it. Building out our sponsor.
You mentioned that you're not using Hannah Grimes. Is that just their facility or is it?
No, no, just the, just the meeting room for the sessions because absolutely, we're, we're the ones that Radically Rural is a program of Hannah Grimes. So essentially just the, the biggest room that we have is not really big enough to hold all the folks in sessions anymore. But yeah, we'll still be planning it. Yeah. So we'll be building out our sponsorship program for future years. We have a consultant working with us on that, just to continue to reach national funders and sponsors. And as I mentioned, consulting for other organizations and events. Lots of speaking, writing and other media opportunities. So that's what I have and I'd love to answer your questions. Yes.
So you mentioned you came to this area because of, because of these programs. Have, have there been other individuals who have come to the Radically Rural conventions of who have decided to move to this fabulous community?
That's a good question. So we actually moved here for Bensonwood and Walpole. And, but I was working in public accounting when the Radically Rural job was posted. And so I wasn't doing this type of work before the Radically Rural job came open. And I would say that working for Hannah Grimes is definitely keeping me here. That doing this sort of work is keeping me here. I have no desire to live anywhere else right now, even though I grew up very geographically mobile because of what we're doing right here. So it's retaining me, I would say. And we actually, there was one woman that I met with who started the Rural Chamber of Commerce, I forget what it was called. But she also considered applying for the Radically Rural position and moving here because she had attended Radically Rural and was just blown away by it. So I don't know of any, actually, there is a couple moving here this year who found me through Radically Rural and has stayed in touch with me. I think there's a lot of threads that may take time to see where they go. But absolutely, hands down, we have a stellar reputation for being the place to be for rural convenings and for thriving life. Yeah.
So the rest of us here at this table have been very long-term, decades-long or lifelong residents of this fabulous community.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. Can I just also ask if, if the commissioners were or even if they weren't able to afford with support this year, could the county, under the work of what Commissioner Clark has done and with the support of the other commissioners, we, we're the first county in the state of New Hampshire to develop its own county energy corporation. Or, and, and, and in partnership with the New Hampshire Collective Power, what is it?
Is it the Community Power?
Community Power, yeah, New Hampshire.
Yeah.
I'll have a moment. And so I think that's a great story and other, and what we initially did it for us. But what we realized is, and we learned this from the pandemic, that how administrators are, there's different very levels of, varying levels of uptown administrators. And some, and some don't even have it, some are run by select boards. So all of a sudden they, they get this influx of, of ARPA monies or whatever. We were able to step in and help that process with them. Out of that, we learned also that, that they don't understand about power. And so we actually working with the legislature, we were able to change the language because it's only for towns, cities to have the county come in and do this. So that now towns, then they don't even have to put it on a warrant article. They can have some public meetings where they can introduce the idea and the select board then can move forward with the idea. And it, it just takes out that, that heavy lift from, from people. And I think it's a great story to tell, especially for rural areas that may not have that. And I, that may be something down the road that if, if that, you know, Henry, yourself and others, to, to tell that story.
I think it might actually be happening this year because we have Doria Brown, who's with the City of Nashua. But she is an influencer online for her work with eco issues. And she is, sorry?
She's a member of the board, CDC.
Okay, yeah, so she is partnering with Rob Warner on the Clean Energy Track this year and Community Power. And what we're doing here is top of mind for her. And so even if the session doesn't happen this year, it probably will, because this is a perfect example of how we showcase what's working for us and the really innovative things that we're doing. And because other places, for example, the Chesterfield model for broadband, that was a nationally recognized model that we've been able to share and other places can replicate.
But it started here in the county.
Yeah.
Because we were working in the Southwest Region planning to put together the Manad Nak Broadband.
Exactly.
And we said, also still help facilitate the conversation.
Exactly.
Then Brad and others started going down their roads to really make this a reality. And then we worked with Senator Khan to get the legislation in place and Parker with, with consolidating. And that's how it got here.
Exactly. And that's a perfect example of the innovation and collaboration that is the essential the essential ingredients for this county and why we've been so successful and continue to be a, a great example to other rural communities. And that's kind of like those threads that you're talking about, how well it started with these two people working together and this and that. That's how Radically Rural is on a national scale. It's like, it's hard to sometimes point to, you know, like so-and-so moved here or something like that. But it's all of these different things that are coming together and like, oh, right, that was a connection from Radically Rural way back when. So that's a perfect example. I, I, and it is amazing, yeah.
And another idea put in your head at some point down the road is, I don't know if it's ready yet or not, but we have a restorative justice program that we started about three years ago. And it's evolved into what we call now Restorative Community. And same principles of restorative justice, now we're bringing it to the community, we're taking it to the public schools. Keen High Schools now take, working with our people to really develop their, their process when it comes to just narrative actions and how you can do with restorative skill sets into the, into those discussions. So I, I think there's some other things that we could probably talk about down the road.
Definitely. Rob Warner brought that up as a, as an option for our mainstream track. So I, yeah, it's completely, I agree.
Patrick Keenan hands you an incredible job, so.
Yeah.
So just something, other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to ask the county administrator to offer the child a donut.
She said after mommy's done.
Well, we'll take it to get the donut out.
Make sure there's enough time.
I promised her a trip to Prime Roast, because as you guys know, staffing with childcare centers is tough right now and they don't have pre-care this year for that reason. So I couldn't get her there technically. That's why she's here and she dressed for the occasion.
Thank you, sure. Any other questions? Seeing none, then we'll, the commissioners will, will then take all the information you brought forward and, and see how they want to report it.
Thank you. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here and the snacks and goodies and card are in gratitude for, you know, whether or not you fund us again, just in gratitude for the two years of funding. We are so incredibly grateful and could not have gotten here without the support of our county in so many different ways. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Hey, so moving on. Next, uh, reading out the agenda, item number one, one by eight, eight, sending the annual reports each year. It's our cause on the last month of operations.
Thank you, thank you, having you. She's not bringing local snacks, sorry. So thanks for having me. Just to start, I can only do summary of two thousand twenty-three, we had half countywide in terms of incidents of work. That's a significant part of the job. So one part of my job, so there's one in those because I'm in the due coordinate graphics, so I'll stay on that. Over the county, we had a hundred eighteen incidents last year and that is everything from a paper cut all the way up to somebody being helped, extended out of time of injury. Of those hundred and eighteen, nineteen of those being filed, compensation claims. In some cases, that was just a trip to, you know, just a, a reimbursed trip to urgent care or something. In other cases, it's a long period of time, it's out. But in general, you know, part of this year, Kim and Desiree and I have part to make sure that people are reporting when they get injured. You know, one of our biggest fears in that venue is that if somebody gets injured, they don't report to us and you find out. People have been very responsive to our request to do a better job reporting. If people haven't had a better job, it's really good to see. Overall, Maplewood, as you would imagine, has the most incidents claims. Their most common injury are strains, sprains usually associated with president, including a resident. When that happens, you know, we review what happened in the incident, we talk a little bit about, was there assistive technology that should have been used? In most cases, it's not. You know, we talked a little bit about lifting technique and, you know, what is the park where it's like somebody's, somebody's safely. The next most common was at DOC and there, once again, as you can imagine, the most common restraint, sprains associated with listening and working with inmates. So those are the big ones in terms of what's going on in terms of incidents, reporting complaints. Along those same lines, we just completed doing the five million vehicle audit for the year, actually that every year, Stu, actually Friday it's due. And that's been done, so all of our vehicles and property are updated. The only big change there was, you know, the, we added on the traveling nursing house to our, to our unoccupied. Added on. So that's what else going up there. In terms of life safety, you know, we continue to do fire drills. We've done one here at County Ball, we'll do more of those in the spring. Chris has asked that I make sure I have a rainy day to do those.
Every year it's raining, let me tell you.
It does, it seems like can't get the weather. At Maplewood, we're continuing to do them on every shift around the clock. And that's gone really well this year. Bruce and Mikey get a great help in making sure I can run that system and run it well. Maplewood, we did our survey in July and in terms of life safety, we did a great job. Things were great in that respect. And ALF, we actually just had ours a couple of weeks ago. And that went pretty well. It one fire door that we had to, had to replace, but other than that, it was a good visit program. And the last thing in life safety is we did in October, we did extinguisher training at Maplewood. Take a third of the staff and bring them out and we have retired firemen come in and he actually lights the fire in the field and stack it, put it out. And they kind of enjoy doing it.
It's great training.
It's fantastic. And they get there and they, they put the fire out. It's, it's a good time and I, I think it really makes them more confident. And Tim does a great job of making people feel comfortable. They've never used a fire extinguisher, it's a great job of having to feel like they can do that. So.
Who's the retired?
It's Tim Reed. Tim Reed, yeah, he's a, he's a good guy. He, he's been fantastic. And so, you know, we'll do that again. We have talked about maybe expanding it and doing it here. County employees from here taking advantage of that as well. Because everybody should have practices. Good common sense.
You could almost open it up to the community. Give Chris something to do.
I'll leave that alone. Another part of what we do, another part of what we do across the county is we, we do mask fittings for Maplewood and also for the sheriff. We're doing the sheriffs next week, they get fitted with a gas mask. Do that and training for them. Maplewood, we continue to do fittings for M ninety-five masks. And that is an ongoing process. We do some of those third shift, we come in and do those at night so we can catch the overnight staff especially. In terms of building audits, last year, all the building audits were done across the county. We're starting them up this year, Maplewood, we kind of took it in a different direction where we don't do the whole building at one time. Instead, we, because it's such a massive building, we take the building into smaller parts. And people go around, we do sections at a time rather than trying to do the whole building at once. And that's going on now. The big thing here, as you remember from the budget meeting, is I'm hoping we get funding to remove the chemicals so we can kind of get our chemical hygiene back in track. Hopefully that'll happen. So we had, we, we've collected all the unused chemicals that have been here for decades. And they're in the basement of the deeds building right now. And we're looking to have, I put it in the budget, we're looking to have those removed and sequestered.
So you put them all together from all of them?
Uh, we put them together from, Maplewood has always been on top of it, so we didn't have to do anything really there. But we put together, Mike Moses and Rob Hart and I went around and we selected all the unused chemicals from this campus. And then when the EMS site was being done, there were some chemicals that were left there that were up here, they're in the garage.
How many gallons of stuff do you think there?
Wow. Well, there's some very big jobs in the, you know, in the garage. I guess I had to say like, I guess a minimum total gallons, maybe a hundred of everything, but some of them, some of the things that are there are solids that we just can't get rid of. Garbage, have, have sequestered.
Can we utilize the city of Keene as Matt did?
That is only a residential process, so we can't go there as.
It's not the first time we've had to deal with some of this stuff. When we did some of the work up at the Red Barn, that's like a few years back, there were some unknowns that we were even afraid, we were praying that they could take the barrel, lift it up without the bottom dropping out and then everything going everywhere. And then that's a mess in itself, but it all, they were able to suck everything out, the barrel.
So here, I don't quite get the restriction. So what does the city of Keene do with the stuff?
They, they hire a company that comes in and they actually, I think they subcontract it out. So there's somebody that shows up and they actually have that company come in. They, they sequester the stuff and I know that because as Chesterfield residents, I've brought this.
Can, can we talk to them, some sort of collaborative?
They, they weren't, they weren't really open to it. I talked to them, I mean, they were high in the day.
When we were clearing out the EMS, the initial EMS building, those, some of those chemicals that are simple here still. I put some of them, and I took it out there. And they charged me like a hundred and seventy dollars. They said, don't ever bring this again. I said, well, I'm going to just take it, don't ever bring it back. So I made them take it, but they didn't want to take it. So, you know, it's the same stuff. I mean, if I was a resident, you'd take it then. Because, ah, you won't, I mean, I don't understand. The stuff has to go somewhere. Either you get rid of it or I get rid of it. What's going to be?
Well, that has not proven, it's not just for Keene, of all county towns.
But you have to be a, a single resident, it can't be a company. So.
So.
They didn't make me take it back.
So we, we know the companies deal with that.
We, yeah, we've got a couple of them.
How much money do you think?
Um, I, I requested ten thousand dollars. I got one quote that was about eight thousand, one twelve. And I'm not sure how valid those quotes will still be, but once the budget passes, I'll reach out to these companies again and find out.
The problem is, it's like eight or ten different chemicals.
Right.
Drop components. So.
Some of them I haven't done.
Some are boiler cleaners, other things that I, you know. It's not, it's not like it's nuclear waste, but they're different enough so that the the process.
Or they're unknown enough.
Right. Yeah. We don't have a lot of like, you know, mystery boxes. In most cases, there's a label, but you know, some of this it's fairly old. Nothing like you described, the barrel breaking part, but there's some stuff that's been, it's been around.
This is like the, maybe the fourth time we've done something like this. You know, when we, when we start taking the ceiling, some of the, of the the tanks that we have in the ground, we have to, you have to take, you have to fill it with sand and that's only if the state says that's the criteria we can use. Or you have to empty it. I mean, there's all these steps you have to go through. So, you have to have the company come in. You know, and you have to do the bids and we did that. So, this is not abnormal for us. But the thing about it is, once we do it, it's done because our practice now is, is completely different from the past.
So, we have a, we have a protocol in place.
We do.
Paint cans and things like that.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I could argue that, that I could argue that the EMS stuff was a residence, but they probably still argue with us. I mean, we, we didn't put it there. The residents that was there put it there, you know? We took it over the house.
Yeah, they had a business there. Yeah, and that was the problem.
Yeah.
This is now, now a person.
Yeah.
All the targeted chemicals.
So, so, you know, that, that process is gonna continue and hopefully we'll get things resolved before the summer, I hope. Um, in other things, we do now have Narcan, Narcan on site in all our buildings.
Where is it located?
Uh, it's located right outside, next to the A D. Wherever possible, we put it next to the A D.
Perfect.
So, every site, eighty-sixth West Street has one. The courthouse, the veilous on, in, on floors. Courts do carry Narcan, but we did put one.
This is the nasal spray.
This is the nasal.
Yeah. What's the expiration period?
Uh, the ones that we just got expired February twenty twenty-six.
Couple of years.
So, a couple of years. So, in, in the gentleman, actually, we did training yesterday. Kim was in the training. We did training for staff here on how to administer. Uh, so, John from Anadla Care is came down and did training and talked about, you know, expiration dates.
Where, where's the source of all of these?
Um, for me, it's a grant funded because Narcan is now over the counter. So, you know, you know, before we would need to have somebody to write a medical prescription. We'd have to do that.
What does it cost now, retail?
I don't know. Because he, you know, John just, he gave us all the Narcan we need right now. So, we're in good shape.
When it expires, that part of the hazmat.
No, so John actually, John actually will take it back. And what he asked me to do is to bring it to him six months before it expires. Because then they'll give it out to people, the community before it expires.
Okay. Does he give us new stuff?
He does. Yeah, he'll give us new stuff. Uh, right now it's for free.
Grant is.
So, yeah.
That's a nice idea, yes.
Yep, so he'll.
He gave us, um, for, for individuals, he gave us little kits that we can keep in my car until, unless the weather's freezing and it, because it can't have extreme weather, but it has the Narcan, it has directions and it has a face shield. So, if you need to provide breathing for somebody that has overdose, it has everything you need right in the little kit. It's very nice.
Nice.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're pleased with that. And then the last thing is we're beginning to work a little bit more on cybersecurity. You know, Primex got a grant working with the Adam Group to do a, you know, New Hampshire municipality series of workshops. So, we did one in July. We did kind of a general overview. And then in January, we did training here for finance, training here for law enforcement, and then at Maplewood, we did one for healthcare specific to those areas of the county. And then a couple of weeks ago, Corey Casey and Bob. Last name.
Thank you. That makes me feel good.
Our risk management person from Primex, Barry, thanks, Bob Barry, came down and met with Chris and I and Davis and Rob Hummel and Melissa and Misty and we actually did a consultation of where we are with our cybersecurity. And, you know, overall, we're in pretty decent shape. We do need to work on a continuity of operations plan. And that is something that Corey has said he'll work with Misty and I to begin. So, we'll work on a continuity of operations. Um, in the event there is a cyber breach. But that was actually a really great session to sit down to kind of.
It's also something that, I mean, it's, it's good to have. But if, if we want to maintain our Primex discount, we have to also follow through with this too.
Right. In order to qualify as a crime, we need to do the consultation.
Forty-five bucks at Walgreens and Target.
Okay. Okay.
Forty-five. Got two spray, Ken.
Thanks. So, that's kind of where we're at. Yeah. Excellent opportunity. Any questions?
Just a quick question. You mentioned the one hundred plus injuries from paper cuts, something.
Right.
Something serious. What was the most serious injury you had?
Um.
Any requiring hospitalization and or surgery?
No, no. You know, the, the most serious one we had was a, we had a person in the county who had a pretty serious back injury. He were out for a while, getting P T, getting back.
Was that at Maplewood?
No.
I honestly think our most serious one was a mental health issue that Primex denied repeatedly.
Right. That they deny.
That they deny because you can't, because no matter whether the employee signs a release or not, the providers, mental health providers will not release appropriate records to workers' compensation for them to determine that it was work related. Um, and we had a young man that, that has some pretty significant U T S D and I think that was the most significant. I, I, again, it doesn't count in our statistics because Primex denied it. But there was significant missed time. There were significant physician's appointments.
Hospitalized.
Hospitals. I, I don't think he was hospitalized, but had.
And it's still an ongoing issue.
Yeah, it's still an ongoing issue and we continue to appeal and they continue to deny.
Probably not. Could be. Endured. Not possible.
The incident, there was an incident to happen that was.
So, because his mental health provider will not release the records?
How can he not?
Because mental health is protected differently than regular medical records are and they don't have to release their notes from the individual sessions.
Is this, um, my employee?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a big problem with that. You have to release the notes from sessions. The record is owned by the client, the patient. And I don't understand that. He, he, even if it was to him, he, he has a right, just as we all do, to have a copy made and we may have to pay for it or go through reasonable like fees for photocopying and a reasonable timeframe. But we have a right to our entire medical records and that's not any different that I've ever known with regard to mental health records over my career and in that field.
For a case such as this, might it be possible for, for the mental health provider to be asked to be providing a summary without including all of the specific gory details which may have taken place, which might qualify the individual for the appropriate insurance coverage?
They, they, the provider did release some information, which, you know, I wasn't privy to, but what I was told was the information that was released was not specific enough for Primex to make a determination, that there was a causal thing.
Okay.
Well, I, I was privy to it and it was incredibly vague.
Right.
And it, it, it didn't even include a description of his, his chief complaint, his current symptoms, his d- description of his experience of the traumatic event and his reaction to it. And that's the gist of what's, that's what's relevant to the impact that it had on this young man and his ability to work. And I know that he talked about that. That content happened in those sessions with that counselor.
For any future cases, might it be possible for you to work with Primex to be setting up specific guidelines which, uh, which, um, should be, which could be provided to the mental health person, telling them specifically what has to be included in, in their summary, which lacks the gory details?
Well, I think the point here is the clinician was not a good scribbler. They did not write down. They didn't make good clinical notes.
Uh, uh, or maybe in their policy and her guidance and training, she documented it to a T. But I can tell you over thirty-plus years, myself or clinicians that reported to me, when we were asked if we would produce a separate summary document and highlight certain areas that were factually true, that still were within our role as a treating clinician. Most often, we provided it as a courtesy for our client, um, as an, as an advocate in a sense. Again, nothing that would go outside the bounds of the role that we had in the clinical work with them, but a supplement to an additional, you know, content that maybe we didn't normally include in our, in the official record. But there's probably nothing that compels that person to do that other than our relationship with them through the A P and they work for us indirectly. And I think it's a shame that if she's still been unwilling to, to do that, which is where I last left off on this ongoing issue is that I think was asked of the clinician.
I, I don't think it's a reportable practice violation to the licensing authority because in a. They're not, well, they're not advocating, they're not providing the necessary information to allow their client to get the proper treatment. That's not right. There's something wrong with that. So, he's been denied adequate response to his trauma because of the clinician's failure to participate in a meaningful, uh, a process of treatment. There, there's no way around it. I'd absolutely be filing it, like, absolutely.
I second that motion.
That's just irresponsible. When you deny treatment for the opportunity to share knowledge, to allow your client to get prominent response, that's negligence. But then you cannot, there's no other way to put it.
I think you can make the case because the contractual relationship with the clinician is to, to Primex and the purpose is ultimately about a claim. And so, it's not like this was a private clinician in private practice who you probably have not as much recourse there to compel them and it's probably not a legal violation per se. It, it's professional courtesy and it's in that case. But in this case, I agree with you, given the purpose and the nature of the interrelationships between the, the client, the employer and Primex and, and the clinician working under contract, I guess, with Primex.
Has the individual authorized the release of his records?
Yes.
That's, yeah, I guess it doesn't make any sense at all. I've even seen short-term disability claims where as long as the employee has signed off for the release of the records, the, um, therapists and have released it to Lincoln to make a determination whether or not they're gonna pay the claim.
Well, they're, they're released, she released records, I think, but they're, they're woefully inadequate. They're, they're, I can't remember, but there is minimum as you could have. You know, it shows the date of an appointment, his name. Uh, the, the content is.
Just for sake of, of making sure, are we staying within the guidelines for this situation?
Yeah.
Or should we be in non-public? I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable.
We haven't identified.
I, I understand.
Anything in particular. This is just general conversation.
Okay.
Don't help us this case.
This goes back to September, the, the, the initial tra- traumatic event, which I don't want to say too much detail about because of now.
So, you know, six months old. Shit, I complain.
Well, the, the other problem I have is, my bet is there's a professional practice requirement that clinicians maintain adequate records of the treatment that they provide to patients. You can't not have a record. And if you just say Joe showed up on Tuesday at two for an appointment, it'd feel good. That's not adequate. It's just not. Uh, now, my, my other thought is, you know, we could agree to pay for an independent medical exam from Primex to send the person to get the detail we want, that the client's obviously willing to share. And do it through an I M E.
Yeah. I mean, I know that the employee is, is seeing another person now.
Yeah.
Um, and so, the, the question isn't access to treatment. The question is if his mistime falls as a worker's compensation. That's, that's what should, should he be compensated for the days he missed? Uh, you know, that, that's, that's the real issue. And, you know.
Well, and, and any other accommodations?
Right, exactly.
Might be required under A D A.
Yeah, but he and I discussed mostly it's his mistime. He used up all his vacation time. It's, it's unpaid time.
I, I, I just, I just obviously makes me whistle that we're insensitive.
Right.
Through a systematic glitch to a problem that perhaps we could be more supportive and responsive. I, I know you guys deal that way.
And, and I know, like, I've, I've talked to him about, like, for Prime Action, if they have a broken leg, there's
Yeah.
an injury, an event, a treatment plan, and it's really laid out. You know, mental health issues are, are a little more vague. And so, what I've let him know is what he needs to have his person document happened and what the treatment plan was and why.
It sounds to me like he's taking that next step because he's changed provider.
Right. And, and, you know, the E A P person, you know, their, their intention is to kind of be a clearinghouse. I don't know that they're necessarily contracted by us to be an extended counsel for that person. Right.
No, I think he's done. They provided, I think, at least four sessions, maybe even one or two more. They met the contract. It was a good service. It was helpful to him. I don't actually know if he's gone on to see another provider, but it's not about access to, to the treatment. It's really about access to a properly documented record consistent with the service that, that they provide to him and us under the contract.
How much time did this individual miss work?
Oh, it was, he was out for a month, I guess. It's, I don't know if Kim or Steve remember, but it was quite a while.
It was, it was, it was like four to six weeks. And then there were times he would come back for a day or two, but then he wouldn't be able to come the next day. So, it took a while.
I just, obviously, I hope he's getting support that he needs.
Yeah. I think, I think, I think he's moving ahead.
He's, he's felt, felt very good about the support that he's gotten from, from us at all levels, from Steve and, and Kim and, and and, and even the counseling was, was helpful. He didn't have an issue with his counselor and their relationship and what happened. It's just this, he's very frustrated about the dead end he reached around the, the worker's comp eligibility or the denial.
Well, you know, I understand the whole broken leg thing, but on the other hand, if he was more subject to broken legs because he had osteoporosis, he would still be a worker's comp if he broke. he would still be a worker's comp if he broke it, even though, even though he had some pre-existing sensitivity. The eggshell skull theory, we used to call it, was that if I hit you on the head and I just tap you, no harm will come unless you have a very fragile skull, in which case doesn't matter. You know, you, you still hit somebody on the head and cause damage. Which we do all the time.
All right, anything else?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So since Doug is on the call, um, my report would be next, but I think what would make more sense is for us to go into non-public. Uh, there's two issues on the non-public today. One is a personnel issue. Um, the non-public position for the R S A, uh, eight, three, two, dismissal promotion or compensation to any public employer, disciplining of such a play. Investigation and charge against unless, so you know that one. And then the next one would be non-public session actually to R S A ninety-three, eight, two, as which is discussed in public, will likely affect the So just a motion to go into non-public?
To move.
All right. Commissioner Wildback, all right, Commissioner Clark. And Commissioner England has just stepped out to get caught and he's coming back now. So, um, my report, and I'll start with just a few things I want to make you aware of. Uh, M B D C is having a dinner Saturday, April seventeenth, um, at King Country Club at five o'clock. Uh, if you are interested in going, just make sure we're aware of it so that, um, and that is something that we would pay for the ticket for you to go. Sununu is the guest speaker, uh, the governor, uh, so.
Hundred bucks.
Yeah.
What's, what's the point?
They've been doing this over the last few years. They, they dream, last year, there's probably, I went last year and there's probably about, I don't know, eighty people, ninety people there in the room, and they just talk about where they are today, how they're moving forward, what's going on for them, partnerships that they've done over the last year. There's a lot of stuff Cody's doing. He'll, we'll have Cody back in probably in but, um, and turn the handle.
I did.
Uh, so if you guys want it, want to go, it's also in my world, I think it's a fundraiser for them, um, on some levels too. Uh, but it's also to get the word out there and, and have people come together. So again, uh, that is April seventeenth, if you want to. Um, I just want to know, I, I know that, um, Jack, you'll be going, but Terry, if, if and when Primax drops the the information for the conference in May, would you like to attend the Primax conference?
It's likely the second week of May.
Yeah, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be gone ten days, probably towards the end of
What, do you know the dates for yours? So I can try to
Uh, not exactly. Wait, since retiring in May, see. Yeah, I don't know what they
Yeah, I, I talked about it with, um, let me find it. I know. It's around
It's like the week of the thirteenth.
Yeah, I think it's May fifteenth and sixteenth. Seventeenth, maybe.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Something like that.
But it's, it's, it's that week. I know it's that week.
Yeah, exactly.
So, um, it just, want to start, because what happens is once, i- if I know Terry, your interest, I know that, I know that Bob is Jack always gets his own room through Primex. Um, we'll nail that down right away, uh, so that we get, we get rooms. Cause it goes quick.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I get a big ass week. Big ass week. Is that the party's week? Yeah.
Um, just so you know, if, if you're, if you're friends with Tom Mullins, today's his retirement party from twelve to one-thirty at City Hall Chambers. So if you want to head over and wish him luck, he's not really, he's, he's, um, he is, he is staying on a part-time basis. So, uh,
It's, for some reason, it's on U N H's website. It's on May fifteenth, seventeenth.
Fifteen to seventeen.
You got it. So, yeah, uh, Wednesday, Thursday.
The, uh, we've already put your rooms for the, uh, Washington, Mount Washington for the, uh, New Hampshire Association of Counties Conference in November. That is
Uh, for Primax on here, May fifteen through the seventeenth.
So that's all taken care of, um, for you guys. If you wanted to get that done early too. Get those rooms built quick and then you're down the road from the Mount Washington. That's never a great thing.
It's on the Veterans Day weekend.
Yeah, it is.
Starting on Sunday from Monday.
Usually a lot of people like to go up on Sunday because that way you're not driving. It's five o'clock in the morning to get there for the eight, eight o'clock breakfast and the nine o'clock first session.
Where, where is the primary?
Primax is in Portsmouth.
Pretty close.
Yeah. Sheridan. Based out of the Sheridan, but it's all through Portsmouth, yeah.
Then we're talking about specifically November ten through November thirteen. Or November eleventh, if you decide to come on, on the Monday instead.
I sent you those last night. Okay.
Except for yours.
I know. I don't know why I don't. I don't have one. So I'm wondering if they didn't get mine or
I was registering for hotels so hard.
So, uh, Kathy.
Mount Washington, the, uh, N H A C is, uh, tenth through the thirtieth.
And then the last one I have for you guys is for dates, is, um, Castle Street, uh, grand opening. If you remember uh, Keen Housing, uh, where they have the day room and the washing machines and Service Link is, is there. Uh, that burnt, uh, pretty much it was totaled. And so they tore the whole building down and rebuilt it. Uh, it is amazing inside. The space that they created in there is just incredible. And so the grand opening for the Castle Street, uh, project is March sixth from two to four. With, with, uh, I think it's two, two fifteen is the opening remarks or right around there. You should have received a delegation notice from the city of Keen where they're gonna have the meeting, the usual meeting that they have. My understanding this year is in Heberton Hall because the city council chambers is just not big enough for people for the turnout.
What date is that?
Seconds. Let me see. My next link.
It really is. Well, the Kristen's closed.
Yeah, it is.
It's usually wasted.
March twenty-sixth. Tuesday, March twenty-sixth at six-thirty. And I'm guessing it's the normal stuff where the mayor will speak for a second. And then the city manager will turn it over to, uh, Margaret Burns from Municipal Association. She'll do her conversation. There'll be some, some people talking about certain bills that they're working on in state legislature and then everybody goes on their way.
Same stuff we all hear from our current lobbyists. I'm not quite sure. I've never for thirty years, I still don't know what the hell a plate is. I walk away with it.
Yeah.
There's no conclusion. There's change in dynamics. Well, it's pretty much what, uh, municipal association is working on, thinks is pretty good.
Yeah, but everybody knows that anyway. It's all part of the municipal system. Why have it over hot can?
So, um, the mayor, the mayor has asked to, to come and, and just, uh, talk to us about
Five o'clock.
Hmm?
About like five.
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
So the mayor's asked us to come, uh, a- a- and, and come before us and talk. So we're hoping that next week that he can come to. If not, it'd be the following Wednesday.
He wants, he wants us to go to that.
No, he wants, he wants to come here and talk.
He wants to come here.
So I, I said, asked if he could do either next week or the following week, because we're here for the next two weeks.
But let's think about what you want to present. Cause I think that, uh, kind of a presentation like Chad did to the delegation would be very useful to appreciate the integration of the Cheshire EMS into the region. I think he needs to see that to help continue anything that Hansel and, and Elizabeth and anybody else has said. And I, I don't know what the, what would be the agenda for him. Just I want to
Well, he wanted to come before us to talk to us about some of the things that his visions and his plans are. And I mean, uh, to be honest with you, I, I, I don't think it would be harmful if we talked about I, I don't think anyone that comes before us understands the full breadth of what the county does. And I know that when we go out and talk, when I've talked to Rotarys or, or Lions, or whatever, they're, they're like we just, we didn't know you guys are, and, and it's, it's massive. And there's a lot of things that like Connected Families New Hampshire, like restorative justice, and, and I could go on, community power. These are things that are really important things that are happening that people don't know. And I think anytime we can do that, so I don't disagree with you. You know? But
But what I'm suggesting is that to me, a major purpose would be to underscore the connection between the county and city. Not between the county and everything it does. Not unimportant, but but the whole issue that he was exposed to was this vitriol between the city and the county.
I, I think we're, I think they're, we're tied together more than on a continual basis, whether they understand how, how, how it is on small levels, just with the budget increases that we've done for juvenile justice. So they can bring on that coordinator in that position to the, the collaborations that we started with.
Keep, keep one thing in mind.
And they're not cla- broadband and
Right, but it's, it's the nexus to the city because every city councilor, a lot of city councillors and Elizabeth will be watching the recorded session. When the mayor comes here, because they're gonna, they're gonna want to know what he said to us, what he said to him. So this is an opportunity to really educate the city council. As our position on a lot of these things that bring the city and the county to touch edges, you know what I mean?
Yep.
But, because there, there's going to be councillors going to watch that, because they're gonna want to know, geez, what's he gonna say?
So we're gonna have that, then, well, hopefully we'll have that, but, um, also New Hampshire Solar Gardens is gonna come or come up, uh, next week and just talk about some of the ideas that they have about how they could help us, whether it's building a model, building something or, or whether it's
The proposal that they've sent over. Twenty-five-year P P A. Us to essentially buy electricity from them next twenty-five years on the project in Swansea. I, I pass it on to John Condos. But you know, our discussions, uh, Rod was involved with I, I don't know that getting involved in somebody else's project is really where we want to go because that's not really doing anything for us. It's not moving the needle. It's not it's, it's not, uh, controlling our, our control over our electricity. You know, we're starting at ten point nine cents. With a, you know, with an annual, there won't, there won't be any escalator, even, but we, we're already at eight one.
Right.
That's right.
No, we
I understand. I mean, he's I, I think, I mean, even though, you know, I've read, you know, the, the back thread and, you know, Rod said that does he know that we want to buy our, we want to own our own unit? And then I read the proposal that he sent over. Yeah, I mean, those Well, and the other side of it is why on earth are we ever getting any related energy for twenty-five years? That just seems like an incredibly long period of time. Well, you know, their model, you know, it's what the Keen City has done, uh, first on Marlboro Street and then at the airport. That, that is, you know, when community power and all that was new, I mean, that was, that was the go-to thing, uh, because it really it had a, a shovel-ready kind of program in place. Uh, and that was maybe attracted them. But not really anymore. I mean, not on our level, on our level, I mean, you know, we can, we can bond something twelve years. Own it in twelve years.
Exactly.
As opposed to still be paying them off twenty-five and they have control, they have control over rate and all of that. So
For you, still throwing you a few pennies.
I mean, if this company builds.
They do.
You know, and, and, you know, because there's a possibility that we could become involved in pro- the project that Winchester is trying to put together through John Condos to get sustainability. Where we could put that under the umbrella of Cheshire Community Power. You know, we, we would be we would have a P P A with, with, with the town of Winchester, but we would be owning it would be our facility. We could add, delete, whatever, at our will. Whenever it's just more flexible, as time goes on, you know, whatever, whatever the market changes to, it does, it's changing rapidly. So I mean, if we could hire them to build the place, somebody has to do that.
Our thing, my thing is, is that, you know, I, I told him, I said, I, I don't know if I'm in love with E, with, with owning. I don't know if I'm in love with, with what their proposal is. But I want them to be able to present because we've done revision now three times. They've come, Rod and I had them come in and talk to us about a proposal and there's nothing ever evolves out of it. And, um, and, and Rob would come back to me and say, their numbers don't add up.
Well, no.
They're, they're, they're using numbers that are, are projecting that, uh, public utility or, or ever source will have rates that are like sixty cents per kilowatt.
Yeah, I mean
And that's just crazy.
Well, theirs is the same model as Lumen. It, and, and it's, it's a for-profit model.
Yeah.
Uh, and the way it looks at the energy market is old. Old.
But that's the reason I wanted them to have to be here is because I want to push, I want I mean, you have a better understanding than I do on, on this and I want to push the envelope to see if they can come up with something that meets what we're, we're looking.
I think, I think we should, uh, we should hire that sustainability, uh, to do that for us. They're the nonprofit. So they have, they have some people working in there that have built solar all of their lives.
I'm Anybody that actually understands it?
In our current view, you know, talking to, to the towns and, and to, uh, ever source really totally, uh, filled in about, you know, ever sources excuses and, and their capacities and things like that. So, yeah, I, I, you know
Is it John?
Yeah, John Condos.
And I can reach out to him or you can introduce me and we can have a discussion and see, I can, let's go down that road.
Yeah, well, uh, I'm, I'm, I've already got a, already got a meeting with him just to flesh out, uh, you know, what, what kind of a role he could play.
Yeah.
The organization could play. Uh, and then we get together with you to discuss what you've already done. Basis you've already touched.
Yeah.
And and sort of integrate that with things that he's already been doing and he's trying to put together. And then, you know, uh, I think we'll, we'll be on more solid grounds. Because you gotta remember, we, we have the back shop of C P C. Because you gotta remember, we we have the back shop of CPC and H. And that's in, but in value, it's free, we're a member.
Right.
You know, and they have some of the largest companies in the world. Working with their analysis of the market. Distribution, all that sort of thing. And that's, that's our back shop. Where normally, they're gonna pay Lumina. You know, they're they're gonna add two cents a rate just to do that function.
Then let's, let's go down that road. I mean, start, if you can, you know, when they're, if John wants to. Set set up a time where we can meet, then I'd love that, I'd love that. I mean, I can reach out to him too, but if you've already got the connection. Then you can go down that road and I'll be ready when you're ready. But I'm still gonna have him come, and let's push him, see where it goes.
Yeah, I'd like to meet him and and I I may have already met him, uh. Because I was on, I was on that committee of the city. Hired, ultimately hired revision for Marlborough Street.
Yeah. Okay. Meeting with the city of Keene Fleet Manager on Friday, I want us to have a better understanding of how they look at their fleet services as we grow with. With EMS and with the jail and with with um. The Sheriff's Department, so that if there's some things that we can learn from them, if there's some, some some software that they have that we can. We could see if that made sense for us to to utilize, whatever it may be, but I'm, you know, gonna be meeting with their team on Friday. To start having that discussion. That's one of the things that came out of Elizabeth and and my discussion that we had a few weeks ago.
Well, the the city sees it as a way to make money. And my personal experience, having been, having been part of their fleet maintenance program at the airport is is profoundly expensive. And uh. Because it's intended to be a a its own little enterprise in the city. The fleet operation is carved up on all the equipment of the city of us. I mean, for example, I was spending uh enough money on a, on a riding lawnmower. That in a three-year period, I could replace it with a new one, and that one just remained us. We never got it. So. I mean. You can look at it, but uh you won't find a financial deal there.
It's one of the things that came.
Drop if you bought for you.
Yeah. It's, it's one of those things that uh that the the executive committee had asked me to take a look at too, so following through on that, on that perspective too.
We can look at, but there are other fleet that's that are private fleet maintenance entities, right, down on Winchester Street.
Enterprise?
Maybe it's on the fair. Behind what used to be uh. Judge Tire.
Yeah.
To the extent that it's useful, frankly, because we only have, I don't have that many vehicles.
No, we don't, but there's something we can look at. I mean, I was shocked to find that um. City in the twenty twenty-five budget has a budget line for new ambulants. For four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And and then shortly thereafter, there's another one that they're gonna be.
Well, that's, what what are they gonna, are they ramping up for the new fire station? It's also in the CIP this year. Oh, probably, but.
I don't, I just, I just, we were, I I'll be honest, we were criticized for. Purchasing ambulances at such a high rate and, yeah, oh, yeah. By multiple people over there, and I was in there, I mean, I don't see that as as. I see that as a real cost, because I know what we paid for our ambulance, you know, so I mean, and so. It's, I don't understand why they were in in reality attacking us when reality is, that's the true cost.
They don't.
It is, it's just disappointing.
That whole bullshit.
Yeah. Um, the the.
Guarantee you that any ambulance the city buys will be twice as expensive as most. I guarantee it.
Yeah, I mean, we averaged anywhere between two fifty to the bariatric, which was four something, and we had one that was. We had another one that was three something that was a little bit closer to their models.
Yeah, yeah, they're they're all the same, you know, you can't. They, you know, the thing is, the reason why it's a fiction is. You you can shop by model just like you can any other car, but what the equipment that has to go in there is absolutely standard required by regulations.
Yeah.
So the profile purchase price of an ambulance equipped is gonna be virtually the same for everybody. But for the individual, that's actually differences.
It's an emergency.
It's like flights, different bells, different whistles.
It's an emergency room on wheels.
Yeah.
And you have to have every accessory that you need to ensure the safety of the individuals you're carrying. So I I will, I would never have a problem. You know.
One of the reasons why fire equipments is so expensive is every chief, every department they like to customize. Or they can't have just what everybody else has. And in the city, you used to have to. Change the physical dimensions because of the old garage.
Right.
Big number of that.
Yeah.
So that added hundreds of thousands of tons.
Yeah.
Because the garage was big, so you have to specially order a different length of a of of truck. You have two ladder trucks. Don't have any buildings. In town. Oh, they're re, no, they're required at the top. Well, but but I'll say, you know, you have to understand what a ladder truck is. And I, I was, I was. Yeah. But that said, you don't have that many fires to beat your ladder truck problem.
So the, I'm gonna keep on moving here, the District Attorney's Bathroom Project is underway. Um, we're redoing the two bathrooms off the conference room in the District Attorney's area. We're also pulling up the carpet around the kitchen area, putting down linoleum of some sort. And that should be done within about a month. So that's all in place. Uh, as you can see, we're on track with the uh elevator, the work that's being done, you can hear it. Um, and so we're still looking at the uh second week of uh March, March thirteenth, I think. Went to legislative conference this uh on Monday that was put out by New Hampshire Association of Counties. Uh, they just went also, we were at all different tables talking to state reps about topics. They had individuals coming in and talking about um. Bills that are out there and and AI and stuff like that. And I think it was worthwhile. Um, I had to leave um about one o'clock, but the. Uh, we were able to, like I told you earlier, I was able to, you know, present my concerns around uh direct billing. And um and it was interesting because Mark Prue, who is the sponsor of, the lead sponsor of the bill, came over to me and said. You know, Chris Danic, um, who is uh AMR, uh, the the the. I don't know if he's a. Lobbyist, but he works for them and he lobbies for bills and speaks on bills and is very incredibly knowledgeable. He uh. He had told me, because I had gone to the ambulance uh at the New Hampshire Ambulance Association meeting. On the day before, or or last week on Thursday, Chad and I went. And so uh. He had told me that Mark had just gone on and on and on, and and it's like the woman that's sitting. The Republican woman who's sitting, that's the state rep that's sitting on the committee is saying. I've taken the ambulance three times and I get these checks, I don't know what to do with them. So I think it's appropriate that we send it directly to the service different, and it came out of committee five zero.
Okay.
Yeah, and um. And. He he did say it would be nice, but I understand now why. It's not happening, that we have a lot of blue in that room, and we have these type of bills. A lot of, a lot of the ambulance services, like, there wasn't hardly anybody, Mark was really the only speaker along with. With Chris and and it's just um. It's the the organization as a whole, the New Hampshire Ambulance Association is really, I think, at uh. They're struggling, I think, and I think they have to really rebuild and 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 restructure. And um.
That's the one that Justin was uh. President of last year.
Yeah, well, now it's uh in in and the individual who heads up uh New London Ambulance Service. And so um and but but you know what? Like he said today, I was on a run today. I don't, you know, they, what they need to do is they need to bump up their. Their overall, they have two hundred ambulance services throughout the state of New Hampshire, is what he said, and. You know, they have enough.
Two hundred, really?
Yeah, they have enough people out there to be able to. Pay a fare. I said, I paid this for this, I paid this for this, I paid this for this, so I'm willing to pay. For a product if it's gonna give us, you know, somebody that can organize and lobby at the same time. So it was an interesting conversation. We had had people from all over um on on the on the Zoom side of it. Tyler Boucher was one of them. Um, and so we, but we, they kept coming back to us on a regular basis, asking us all kinds of questions. So I think they were very happy that we did. Chiefs that came over to us afterwards, like, we're really, you know, they they thanked us for stepping in and doing what we were doing.
So it came out of subcommittee five zero?
Yeah.
And now it goes to full committee?
Mm-hmm.
John's committee?
Yeah.
And where's John at, based on?
John voted for it. He voted for it in the subcommittee, so.
What, sorry?
John's, in the subcommittee, he voted for it, so.
That's five, five to zero.
Yeah. So, you know, we'll see how it all plays out, but it's, they, Mark really believes the coalition of of Republicans and Democrats, and I said, I said. You're at a crisis point, and I mean, I said, you've got people here from the Department of Corrections. You've got, you you know, you you, we're taking, whether people wanna know it or or not, wanna wanna see it or not, counties are evolving. And, you know, a year, five, six, seven years ago, for us to think about taking on duties of towns, law enforcement. Wasn't on our our radar, really. You know, we heard rumblings, but when you have one town that's supposed to have ten officers, they have three, and another that's supposed to have seven, they have one point five. You gotta start thinking it differently, and when your your state police cannot, doesn't have the personnel to cover the areas at the end. It's not because they don't want to, they don't have it, then you're having these areas that have no law enforcement, so they're asking us to come in, so. You know, we could have four or five by the end of this year that we're covering the towns on some level. You know, and that's the same thing, we, none of us, none of us that are, you know, the, from the commissioners to the delegation to myself. Never thought we'd be in the ambulance service. We thought we could help, we thought we could facilitate, but here we are. So, you know, and so it's it's, it's there, and. You're you're at a tipping point, private, if you don't do these things to help these private companies. Then the burden on on the on on those in the municipalities are gonna be that much greater.
I I'd like to think that most Republicans could recognize that. As a matter of policy. They think people ought to pay for the services they get, and they shouldn't be falling on the general public. This is exactly a good circumstance. It's the same thing I told Hunt a year ago.
Yeah.
And why is it that now all of a sudden the Republican theory is healthcare somehow should be free? It's attitude.
Right.
So.
Well, and then and then I, that was the other bill I talked about was uh if if uh. What is it? No transport, no uh. The, you know, if we don't transport an individual, we don't, we can't bill for the services, and then there's a House bill. I can't remember the number of it, but I said, this is another bill, critically important. If for some reason we go to a scene. And we're at the scene and we deal with the individual. You know, but there's no transport, then we can't bill for the service. If we have to lift somebody back up. Can we bill for that? You know, I mean, these are things that we're dealing with every single day, so anything we can do to help with the crisis that's facing. All of us, because you're gonna, you could be one of you next.
You know, there there is actually a mechanism to bill for no transports even now, and we should talk to EMS about. That circumstance, the EMR, what is our billing company?
Emax, Emax. So I I doing a little bit of research about this and then actually even asking Justin Van Etten. I do believe you are correct that there is the mechanism for billing for non-transports. It's just that there's only certain insurances that will pay for it and others that won't. And so therefore, um, this is kind of where balanced billing goes into play. That if we bill for these non-transports and then insurance doesn't cover it, like Medicare and Medicaid. It's then gonna get balanced billed to the individual and um. Justin just doesn't do it because I, you know, he's supported. By his communities, um, and I think his communities subsidize him. For those level of things, because that's what their preference is, is that they don't wanna see. Their residents getting billed for stuff like that, um, recognizing that. The, it turns into a large gross charge that um.
Right.
Gets in the hands, the the majority of the time for the residents of the community.
And Swansea's alluded to that too, because they they've actually suggested that we do it in lieu of. Any charges to the community members. So, you you know, as we look at our pricing model. Uh, it needs to just take that into account, and so.
And that might become conversations to have further with these communities that we're doing backup for.
Right.
You know, because like right now, of course, we have the contract with the city that they're paying us, they'll pay us for the intercepts. Um, and I won't say that they necessarily wouldn't have also paid a fee, but. We gave them the same thing that we gave to others. But I think this is where it evolves, is that now let's take the further conversation of, okay, but we have now. Gone to X number of calls within the city of Keene to, you know, pick somebody up or. We get there and they refuse a transport. And now we've gone without pay, and so it's just, this is, we gotta continue to keep talking about different ways of billing for the services.
But I've also said that we have to revisit the, you know, is there, is there a level of readiness that we need to charge? Or just for us to be on a on on mutual aid backup?
Well, I I think that at least as to the city of Keene, because it's not a mutual aid. It is a coverage, and 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 we need to. Start that conversation ultimately, that the city of Keene's gonna have to pay us. The same as Swansea pays us. Uh, to cover them. Because right at the moment, legitimately, Swansea and others could say, wait a minute. We have to pay to get this, let's eat us, what's that all?
Yeah.
Because we're basically subsidizing them. And, you know, be one thing if it's actually mutual, just to say they cover us, we cover them, but it isn't, I just, they don't want that. So they just wanna pay for a service, and we were saving them a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. They were paying fifteen thousand dollars a month to have one uh rescue ambulance sit over here. And so aside from the money we gave them out of COVID funds, right, the re, the re, the. The go-for-money, whatever, whatever the hell it was, ARPA, what was that, two hundred fifty thousand or something for the city of Keene? Plus saving them a hundred and eighty, we've given them almost a half a million dollars. So it always makes me a little bit bristle when when. When Elizabeth and others talk about, oh, we don't wanna, we don't wanna carry the burden for Cheshire EMS, well, we've just given you a half a million dollars, so. They have to recognize that. There is a, there's a benefit that they they've got, they've gotten actual cash from us. So they, they're gonna have to pay something going forward at some point. It's just not gonna be tolerable, that's against all the other people that we have to charge as an enterprise.
Yeah, I mean, I'd agree that all of this is gonna evolve, because um. You know, when we did the contract with the city, they weren't adverse to paying. An e- extra fee, it's just that we've at least initially started that contract the same as we have with the other. Towns that they're only getting charged per intercept and or for getting to the scene and not. Providing, but. I I think all, I think all of them are gonna need to.
I think it's a conversation across the board that we're, we're, we're already have, starting to have. And we're just gonna have to continue to have it so that as we prepare for that next thing.
And that, that's what's gonna cause us to look back on Justin, on Justin Van Etten's model of how he charges his communities. Because he he doesn't need to charge for the no transport, because he's building it into the, to the.
Right.
Uh, the town contract.
Exactly, yeah.
And he doesn't worry about it, because he's got one customer, he can bill one time for all services.
Yeah.
And I, doesn't care about it.
Yeah, so I'm gonna keep on moving on, um. Uh we continue the conversation with um. New Hampshire and Vermont in reference to Southwest Mutual Aid upgrades uh with EMS infrastructure. Funding, uh we've been working with Davis and with with Dawn on this, so I have multiple uh meetings and. We're looking at Thursday, March fourteen. Uh ten thirty in this building here to have a meeting where we will have um. Multiple players at the table from Vermont and New Hampshire. To really discuss how we move forward, uh the clock is ticking, um because congressional spending requests. Have opened up for um from Senator through Senator Shaheen's office. And hasn't for others, but it has for Senator Shaheen's office. Um we haven't heard anything from Custer yet, that's that's the. That's all right, yes, so so we know that we need to start looking at the boxes, filling out the boxes and getting that. So that we have that ready, uh because if we were to move forward. With with uh a congressional spending request that has to go into a category, probably go under homeland. Which is a category underneath um that we feel is appropriate, underneath homeland is the brick grant. So we're right back to the drawing board of what we're doing, so in the meantime, we're also meeting with Southwest Regional Planning Commission. We've now met two or three times and really starting to outline who their players on the Vermont side are, he's identified those. They're gonna be at this, hopefully at this meeting too, and um and so. It, you know, one way or the other, we're gonna try to tackle this as best we can. Um Dawn is is, you know, reminded me that the initial five point six million that they asked for. May not be the real number, and also I think that if we include Conqueror in the Concord in this discussion, because Concord's mutual aid. It's the second biggest mutual aid in the state of New Hampshire behind up, uh and they're looking at uh in. Infrastructure upgrade, if we could somehow coordinate that, because if Concord's uh mutually goes down. Southwest Mutual Aid backs them up and vice versa, and vice versa. So that's another avenue that we need to stress to them, so if we could hit them all for one time to get this done. Uh it it'd be a huge. We don't need to take any of the glory, let the politicians do their dance of. You know, we work together across the state to make this all come together and and. I don't care if if Sununu or or Johnson or in Vermont and all any of the senators, I don't, I. Just, I just wanna get it done, so this is, we're we're hoping that this meeting will start leading us down a path. That we can get to, uh to really get this nailed down. Doug, I've been thinking.
Um Doug, I update you, Joe's gonna come over this afternoon if you're available, I'm just gonna sit down with him. The one of the issues is the uh pricing app is three years old. Gotta get that updated, which would be easy to do, but um. And I've also been looking at whether the scope of this project is really big enough, or is it just replacing. Existing stuff and not looking at what they really should be doing, so I think it's probably that. So I, I think they way underestimated how much money they need, and now's the time to fix that.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna pitch it, pitch it right the first time, you can't, you can't go back.
They're a close to me.
Yeah. So that's what we're looking at is uh is Thursday, March fourteenth, ten thirty here. Event in Hampshire, Vermont, fire EMS communication funding, we're hoping to have all the players in the room. Uh there's been some curveballs thrown at us, uh chief uh. From.
Goddard.
Goddard, Chief Goddard resigned. Um. They had a study done up there and.
Not by MRI.
Um. Out of Wyoming, I think.
Yeah.
And and uh they said that they could go to a a a part-time or a volunteer chief.
Oh geez, yeah, and and give all the additional responsibilities to top management, building inspection.
I read that and thought to myself, what are they?
I'll send you the R O.
Yeah, but really, so the town administrator now is going to oversee something that he doesn't have the training him to do, right? So so but but there are there other people that we're, we feel we can gather.
I think they need a follow-up study. They need a follow-up study. Medial study.
So that's where we're at with uh with them, and then. Um the spending press already hit you upon. Oh yeah, Hundred Nights, Hundred Nights, now they they do come to us on occasion and ask if there's a a ability, I did receive this letter. Uh in reference to uh. So Mindy put together a letter um that outlines. Their need, they have people. They're not allowed to have more beds. But they can have people in the resource room on those cold nights, you know, right now that's happening. Um uh they can have people in the resource room, but they can't sleep, they have to stay awake. Uh because that's the city, city of Keene's requirement, so they have to actually have somebody in there staffed. To monitor this at a cost that they didn't want, they didn't, they didn't account for. And um and they wanted to know if there's any way that we could help them with with that, and it's pretty self-explanatory.
City of Keene get a letter to.
I don't know if.
Oh, it sounds like unfunded mandate.
So I, my thinking would be that this would be a hemming way.
So who is it that has to stay awake overnight, is it the staff? Staff with the.
All the aboves, all the aboves.
Yeah, staff needs to make sure nobody's sleeping. So staff, what do they go around with it, with a spoon and a and a frying pan, like bang, 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 come on, no sleeping, don't sleep, yeah. I mean, that's a foolish journey. That just doesn't make any sense at all. Well, in other words, they'd have to lock the building and not let anybody in.
Correct, and they're not gonna do that, what they would have, what what they would have done, could have, would have liked to done at night is get some cots and let these people. You know, s- sleep there, but they can't increase their number, their 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 bed uh count. So this is the next best thing is that, so if somebody's like this, if somebody's like this, then they, you know. I don't know what they're doing.
So the city's hanging that on like a fire ring, it makes you.
That's why they have to stay awake is because they, you know. So what happens is what what they've been doing is at seven o'clock, you know, people leave. They'll do a quick cleanse of some of the rooms and let those people then go in and sleep. And then when, then they wake them up hours later, and then they uh clean the room again. And send them on their way for the rest of the day, and then they repeat this, that's a recipe.
That's all they want. Quick quickly cleanse, wrong, almost person. Uh I think it's a recipe for disaster.
They have no other choice, but I mean, they can't turn the person out. So we're gonna say it's not there, it's not in there.
What are the dates, what are the dates, the Hundred Nights, I was like. It's like March, it is now, based on.
A Hundred Nights is 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 was based on a December, like fifth and a hundred days moving forward, and then. Then that's all changed, because the need is that it's now, it's pretty much year-round that people are needing housing. I mean, so it's become a year-round. Um you know, facility, whether they want to or not.
So they're permitted for year-round now beyond Hundred, right?
Yeah. Doug?
Uh they've done this for a couple years with the same restrictions from the city, but there's been. Significant enough overflow, even when they were in the in the old, especially when they were in the old building. They had people in the resource center. Not sleeping, staffed. It's the reality of that try, I I I don't know that it's a mandate that they do this, but they. Try to be as low barrier as possible, and there's apparently gonna be a need again. To exceed capacity during the the coldest nights, and this is the only way they could do it.
So it's not the first time they've experienced this, they have experienced it in the past.
Yeah, and they have done this, I mean, the that they're asking, I guess, now if I understand. For some help from funding that, for funding, that may be new, but at least one, if not two years, they have. Done this in the old building, in the old resource center. Which is even more cramped, um out of out of necessity, and it's with the same parameters because of, I think, fire. Codes from the city.
What has occurred is that, and one of the few things that's occurred is that volunteers used to be able to do. A lot of this resource uh coverage, and now that they have three floors. Separated by family, male and female, or female, male um uh floors, they're not. They're not able to, uh they just don't have the, they have to do staffing epic, they have to go out and actually pay something. To do this, they just don't have the volunteer levels that they used to have, because, or they do have the same levels, but they have more needs now.
What was their capacity in the old location?
It was uh forty-eight.
Over there.
It was at, but it was forty-eight.
Was that with the bus, Chris?
That was with the bus. Twelve of them, twelve or sixteen on the bus.
And we were able to get away with the bus because it was on our land. Not in the house of that is was on city property.
Right. And then they had a, they have, they would have a, they they had a paid staff or a volunteer staff that sat on the bus at night.
But I'll tell you, the thing I struggle with is they have capacity limitations, they have financial capacity limitations, physical. And I understand the philosophy of letting everybody in. But at some point, you can't do it anymore, because they're not gonna have the resources. If we gave them money out of the. Heavenly fund, once they spend that money, they still have to wonder, well, what about next year, what about next year, for our next year? Suppose the resource center can hold fifteen people, suppose twenty two, take that additional five, start putting them in the kitchen. I mean, at some point, there's simply structural and financial limitations to the services that they can provide. So, yeah, I get I get nervous if they could jeopardize their license or whatever they have, their occupancy permit. By not ever saying no, and and and. So you jeopardize them from a regulatory point of view, and you jeopardize them from a financial point of view.
I think their rationale is they would rather fight that fight. Than fight somebody that they turned away that ends up not making it. I thi- I think it's, I think that is their, that that they're gonna, well, they're gonna, they're gonna find a way to make that, find that person a place to stay warm. During this weather, so that they can, they, you know, can survive that moment in time and then move on from there.
But this would only be during the Hundred Nights period, so we're not talking about now. Well.
Yeah, must be soon.
Oh, it's still a hundred thirty-six. So Martin, a couple of weeks till the moment spring is here, Hundred Nights is over.
Yeah, I mean, she maps it out in a letter, so.
The Hundred Nights period is an artifact from the past per se, like Chris's address. It's those really cold nights, it and it can change wha- whatever time of year, but. That's when they feel, as Chris said, the obligation. To not turn someone away who could literally die out there. I I don't think they're looking to expand in an ongoing way or a long-term way, including the off-season when it's warmer. I don't think they're wanting to do this regularly, this is a.
Hey, so there's.
An emergency necessity as they see it.
Three, but not another reason for. Cause that's another thirty percent increase in the sense. At thirteen people, that's not insignificant. What happens if fifteen people show up? I mean, that that. I understand the. The whole thing, but. Passing this capacity. And, you know. And if there is a fire there, and you've got thirty percent. More than. Your certificate of occupancy, you're gonna have a problem whether those people are sleeping or not. I I don't. I don't know what their finances are like these days.
I think they're they're in the midst of a a major shift overall, I think they're in the the Thursday, they'll be. Um interviewing two uh two candidates for the executive director's position. That um then that person hopefully would be um in in on. You know. In the building by probably, I would think, May. And um.
You have, are they good candidates?
Yep, uh both local.
I I don't, I don't object to funding them, but I think it's.
I think is a bigger question is what you're saying.
Yeah, and I I'm not comfortable funding them for exceeding their capacity by cramming in thirty percent more people than their. License to hold, pretending that somehow fourteen people, staff plus thirteen other people are probably. Keeping each other awake all night long, that's just, that's a fool's journey, it's just not realistic. To me. You know, you're not gonna make any friends by keeping thirteen people awake all night, because they're gonna whack you.
You know, I I think that they're doing what they think is the best, they that the right for them and for and. And I think that they're doing it in a way they feel is the safest for everybody that's involved. Um whether those people are are awake those all that time or asleep, and I'm, don't know. But I know that that's what they've been told, is that they're gonna have this area that those people can be in there, they can enjoy the warmth, but they cannot. Be sleeping in there because it would be an add to your census that you don't have approval for. So that's what they're, that's what they're meeting the standard, it's on the first floor, it's got easy, you know, egress out, just out to the outside of the building. But once they're in, they're in just like everybody else, and.
Because current staff is. Well, mo- most of the other people are sleeping, so I think. No, no, I mean, but there are, but there are staff there. There's a male staff on the male floor and I think a female.
There's staff, there's three floors, uh then one's for family, one's for males, one's for females.
But there isn't, but there isn't one on the floor where the.
Where the resource room is, is where the kitchen is, it's pretty much the kitchen and the resource are the same thing, just the kitchen area, then there's the dining area, which is the resource.
There's nobody there.
There's a first staff, they're currently in there, yeah, that is, they're incurring a cost to have that staff there. That's what they're asking for.
Oh.
In the past, in the past, what they've done is they've asked us, because they've had families out of Keene Inn. And they've asked us to be able to help them with putting people out there. That's what they've asked us to pass.
I I think the optic, the optics of this are troubling for me.
Are, is it the understanding of the city that they're just not. Putting them on cots or beds, and that's the definition of not sleeping? Or Chris, do you take it to mean they literally can't put their head down on a table? Sitting in a dining room table chair?
I don't know, I don't know, because I haven't been there, I know that bottom line is, is that there's tables. And chairs in there at each, at each table, and those people are sitting there throughout the night, having conversations with the one another. They may be putting their heads down because they get tired, but they also know at the end of the day that they'll get a bed after everybody leaves at seven o'clock in the morning. And that they can then move into those beds to sleep for some hours. And my understanding is, is that this would, uh you know, their their numbers go down in the in the summer. So they would, they don't have this issue in the summer, it's just in the winter months when it's really cold.
Oh, so what, what would happen, what happens when? The resource room is full. Well, exactly my point, I mean, when does it, when does it now take place? Cause then you, they'll be putting them in the dining, same theory, let's just keep them awake. And, uh, but that's.
It'd be the only space they have available to do this.
Except the dining room.
No, the dining room is the resource room.
Oh, good?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a wall separating that from like. Where there's like a desk.
I can also have, I can also have Mindy come in and talk to it even more so.
That's one of the biggest criticisms, I think, that the city has, between the police and the fire and EMS. All of their. Eventually you have a thirty percent increase in overdoses, drunkenness, disruptions, things that the city hates. That draw attention to the fact that the thirty percent over their capacity.
But, but my understanding is as long as the city has okayed this, as long as they're meeting the standard of what they've asked them to do. And I can check into that if you want.
That's my understanding, in the past, the city gave them these parameters, they're the same as prior years. And allowed it.
I think we should match the cities. City make a contribution.
Well, the city makes a contribution like we make a contribution, they don't do anything above and beyond that, and I think their turnaround, they're gonna say. We just asked the state of New Hampshire for almost a million dollars for, uh, for how many people we're putting up at the hotels right now.
What, what is?
So they're, they, they're in, 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 I wouldn't disagree, they're surpassing, they're, the, the, the City of Keene is, is surpassing, uh. Many times over what we're, what we're doing.
Are they really cash contributions?
Yeah, their budget, their budget went from, um, two hundred and some odd thousand to almost a million dollars. Uh, uh, for, for rent, for hotel rooms and other situations in the last two years.
Much of that is a city pay for, or is that what?
Yeah, we're paying, I'm paying for it as a taxpayer.
Yeah, no, I didn't know that, cause I, I, my experience was just their budget in a scheme.
Yeah.
Well, you, you suggested this.
It was just, it was just in the paper, what, a week and a week ago?
In the Keene's budget, they give Hundred Nights a million dollars?
No, they do not give million, they do not give, they give, um, they give Hundred Nights, whatever they give them, fifty thousand, whatever it is that they give to them.
That's what I think we're at.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is, aside from that. I think it's gonna be very clear that Elizabeth or anybody else would say, and, and I, I agree with them, that. They're paying, they've got the, the back section of Best Western is the City of Keen, Keen Inn, they've got people out there. They've got, you know, uh, and their, their budget line is, in, in, has gone up to almost a million dollars. They just asked the state, it was in the Keene set, over nine hundred thousand dollars to help offset the cost. The increases they've seen, they've incurred around homelessness. So they're paying that out directly, maybe it doesn't go to Hundred Nights, but it's going to a lot of other places for all the homeless people. Because they only have forty-eight beds down there, so they gotta put them someplace. You wanna make a motion by the Best Western? We can build a hotel if you want.
As long as they have solar panels. It's a great place in Seoul.
Well.
Let's just give this more time.
Hey, all right, I will love.
Yeah, I don't object giving to the Hundred Nights, I, 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 I would struggle under this circumstance, I don't wanna be associated with this.
So I just would ask that, would you want to have Mindy explain in a deeper level than I would know or Doug would know? To what, what is going on and how they meet the standards of everything so that you understand and feel more comfortable with that? Because if you don't have her coming, you're not going to know.
I don't think it's matter.
That's why I watered it.
The answer is no. Let's have Bob, let's have Bob here.
Okay.
But I'm not averse to entertaining a concept apropos various. Suggest that maybe we look at matching the cash contribution to Hundred Nights. That the city makes to Hundred Nights. Just to be able to represent that quite apart from some capacity fictional banger. Saucepan to keep you awake at night practice that we're equally contributing with the city to cash for Hundred Nights. I don't, I don't.
What is that bad concept?
How much do, how much do we do? What do we give Hundred Nights budget?
About twenty thousand dollars, I, I don't have it right here in front of me, but it's right around twenty thousand.
And the city gives around fifty.
Started with, yeah, I think it started a few, I mean, some years ago, Tim Robinson wasn't in the budget, Tim brought it to the floor. Adoption night and asked for five thousand, then it went to ten thousand, and I think it's at about twenty thousand.
Yeah, it's like, I don't have a Keene's current, one, but, uh, last year it was forty.
Forty?
And it looks like they did, it's not voting, but it looks like they also did a supplemental.
I, I just, this is just. All good until it doesn't go well.
Let me ask.
But it's, we just give them the money, not for a specific purpose.
I don't want it to hear Mark. So you wanna wait for Bob? Okay, can we put that on the agenda for next week? Thanks. Okay.
We got a couple hundred grand in the Hemantway.
Yes. That's all I have, uh, from my report, um. Any old business? Any new business?
Yeah, why do, uh, the, uh, Church Community Powered Governance Committee is going to. Starting a, uh, project to, uh, try to entice people to opt in and opt out. Uh, so we're gonna have a meeting and I'd like to have Zoom capability and record it. So that we could use that, uh. Send out to towns and TV station and such like that, is that enough quality? Of a Zoom recording, is that quality about that? We have to dip into our other.
It depends, fine, I think I've, I think the mics are doing better, so let me check how this recording is today, uh, and let you know what the quality is like.
Where, where are the mics, are they embedded up in the?
Yes, yeah.
I've always thought those things are too far away, they need to be down twice as far, but we, we had a meeting, uh, yesterday here, right here.
Yeah.
And Andrea was sitting there facing this way. And it seemed to be okay, every, everybody. They, they could hear us.
Put a new laptop in, they're gonna be here next week. Yeah, next, they're gonna be here next week, they're gonna put in some parts that they know, um. They put in some different parts that didn't match up right, so they're replacing them. But since we've done, since we, we worked with them and we had about twelve different people from there on the Zoom with, with us. We, and they walked us through it and they, they tried to figure out every problem solved, everything, issue that was coming up. I think we've had better success, it's just delegation meetings, that's when they go screwy. And so I'm just waiting for the next delegation meeting, then it'll go screwy again, then people say, why didn't you get this fixed?
How the, one of the issues to me is the, the microphones are closer to the air vents than they are to the people.
Yeah, Doug, can you hear us all right?
Um, it's better in, than in, like a year ago when you're in the room, so I don't know if there's a change. And today I could hear everyone pretty well, with the occasional exception of Davis.
I was gonna say, I thought it was gonna be Terry.
No, I, I can hear him fine, I can't always understand him, but.
Would you say that, so would, would you say that the sound quality is good enough for a, for a recording? Uh, to like be broadcast?
I, I feel like it has, you can ask, if Cheryl's not in their room, right, get another opinion, but, uh, uh, I think it's. Pretty good, and I don't know where Davis is in relation to the microphones. Just a couple times he said things, I, I couldn't make it out as clearly as everybody else who spoke.
Sitting under the table on the floor.
That must be it.
Anybody should be able to be heard, though, it should be Davis, because he literally has a mic a- above his head, almost.
And, and, and both pretty well, so.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, it's definitely better, and so I'll check today's recording and let you know when, dear meeting.
Well, I'll let you know, I, I wanna be able to, I gotta coordinate with everybody, because it's a Zoom thing, so.
Yeah, just let me know when you know.
But it'll be soon.
Okay. Um, any other new business, seeing not to accept the weekly manifest in minutes of February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four? All right. And, uh, any calendar things that we need to know about?
No, I think, I think the only thing with the volunteer dinner and that we're, we're in the future for the next two weeks.
Okay. All that we have left is a German. So moved.
No discussion.
I think we had a good discussion today. We started at eight thirty, it's now twelve thirty.
I was thinking we could be enough to be waiting till twelve twenty-five to turn.
All right, so.
So do you wanna?